We're talking about for the Royal Oaks subdivision. So I wanted to again pull this out for special attention. It's not showing the 10-year plan now, but it's four streets that certain, four roads that, nothing needs to be decided on them today, but ultimately we are going to want to discuss what to do with these. With all that being said, this is the proposed 10-year plan. Streets are highlighted, color-coded. Again, 2014, 2015 is Royal Oaks subdivision spanning two years. The dollar amount we used for this was $1.3 million per year. How did we arrive at that? Basically, it's in the ballpark of numbers we have been using recently. And it's the estimate that we have for School Street. So we settled on that number. It is somewhat arbitrary, I'll be the first to admit that. If you ask me why didn't you use 1.2 million or why didn't you use 1.4 million, they don't really have a good answer for that. Again, other than than the answer that I gave you. So we're using $1.3 million. I made no adjustment for inflation, so that would be something that would have to be done annually as the budgets are approved. That 1.3 million would have to be increased, again, to stay in line with this program that we have. So it would increase each year, depending on the, you know, the inflation rate, price of asphalt. But to help simplify things, I just kept everything in today's dollars when I did this. Two of the, two of the years exceed 1.3 million, Royal, Royal Oaks that we talked about. Also Elmhurst Street, we have an estimate of approximately $2.3 million, Elmhurst Street. We have programmed right now for 2011. So that one, the budget did come in higher, but there was really nothing else we could do with that. We don't want to do it in pieces, I don't think. I think we would want to do the whole thing. So again, that one also came in higher than the 1.3 million. Also, what's not included in this is preventative maintenance. We would certainly do preventative maintenance each year. Preventative maintenance being such things as crack sealing and seal coating, micro-surfacing, less expensive treatments that you would do to the, to the roads that are in good condition now to try and keep them in good condition for a longer time. So some dollar amount would also be allocated, you know, on top of the 1.3 million for preventative maintenance. And with that being said, I also have a slide here that just shows the 2008 streets isolated, if that kind of helps to have that all focused in on that. So hopefully you've got a chance to look at that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Alderman Kneipp.
Yeah, I see you have identified Commercial between Wooddale Road and Grove for this year's. That may be a little premature to do that street. And if I'm reading this correctly, you only have one street for next year, School Street for 2009?
Right. Again, because with the budget of 1.3 million, School Street would be a complete reconstruct, higher costs. We can only do that one if we, if we stayed with that budget. 2008 would be resurfacing. 2009 would be the full reconstruct. And that's why there's only one street in 2009 versus several in 2008.
Like I said, just like, I think that Commercial Street there could be put on hold and, you know, if we had to resurface somewhere else or whatever.
And then if I understand correctly, this is our, our plan, but each year then we go back and validate, is this really what we want to do, given the factors that surround each area, where we may decide not to do a street and, and then reallocate it to another year?
Right. I think the, what we'd like to have decided on soon is the 2008 list.
Right.
Subsequent years, right, each year we would look at it again.
Okay. And then are you, you're going to come back to us on 2008 before it goes out to, out to bid, right? Where we will memorialize the streets to be done.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then one other thing before I call in, another Alderman, School Street, we've also discussed that street. And before we do engineering, it's going to come before council, and we're going to decide on how far that street goes down, what that street's going to look like before it goes out for engineering.
I think we would present concept plans or preliminary plans, maybe some alternatives that we would present to, to look at and discuss.
Sounds good. Okay. Alderman Coles.
On this Royal Oaks deal, with this $3.5 million in this 2014 to 2015, Royal Oaks is one of our streets that, one of our premier spots that shows people what Wooddale looked like when they, when you first come into Wooddale. I mean, that's got, when you come down 83 and you make the turn, it's, it's one of our premier places that make Wooddale look good. And you want to put it off till the 2014 and 2015? I realize it's a lot of money, so it'll have to be split up at least maybe three years instead of two years. Because how are we going to get, we're going to get $3 million? We'd have to spin it up over a three-year period. But I think it should be, be boosted up a little further, up the ladder than eight years from now.
I guess my comment on that would be, it's, it's a little bit difficult because one or two of the streets in that subdivision are in worse conditions than the others. But we didn't want to just take, we didn't want to just do one now and do it piecemeal, because I don't think it would be cost-effective to do it that way. So we looked more at what's the average condition out there? The average condition out there isn't really that bad, and we thought based on that, we could put it off. I'm certainly not suggesting the streets out there are in perfect condition, but tried to balance that compromise.
Well, every circle that's, they drive around is all, is all beat up. Every one of them is. I even sent Gary out there one time to put up, holes up so they wouldn't tear them down. And they also put gravel up there. And these, this is one of the things that they really want fixed up.
I think the other thing we were looking at is that the streets that we have determined to be reconstructed can be more cost-effective to let those go and let those deteriorate. It saves you money to just let them go till they're really at the end of their life rather than rebuild them prematurely. So there are, there's some cost savings to kind of letting those go. And that's as opposed to a resurfacing candidate where it's going to cost you more if you let it go and you really need to resurface it right away.
And eight years from now, it's going to cost $4 million, if not more.
Well, it'll, it'll cost more because of inflation, but I, I think in today's dollars, it won't cost anymore.
Is it possible over the next, you know, couple of months to take a look at those streets and see where the areas are? I know that Alderman Police had visited one area where, where there was like a hole in the street. Can, can we take a look there and see what we need to do to at least take care of the issues that are out there now?
Certainly, that could fall under, you know, preventative maintenance. And even, you know, we might look at doing a preventative maintenance treatment, just a chemical treatment on them to help get them through the last eight years of their life, similar to what we just did on, you know, Montclair, but on a, on a case there to basically just let, let them go for the last eight years.
So there's improvement of some sorts?
I mean, or we could, we could move it up and push another street back. I mean, it's, we.
How about doing that? That would help. That would help, if possible.
I mean, it's all in how we want to prioritize it.
Well, it'd be nicer if the people would know that it was, it's going to be, try to be pushed up. They would probably appreciate that. Thank you.
I think that's part of, part of, sorry, I just jumped in here. I think that's part of what we're here to discuss tonight is to, to let council prioritize, you know, if you feel that we need to change the list.
Mr. Mayor.
Just a comment. First off, I noticed you're missing some streets here and there on this map. This is supposed to be all-inclusive. You're missing the Ethan Woods, which is a new development, but you're also missing all the streets to the west of Wooddale Road, south of Irving.
Private streets are not shown on here, and some of the newer developments probably did not make the list, probably did not make this map, but we'll, we'll certainly include all of those in our street database.
And I, and I want to confirm what Alderman Kneipp stated, and we probably should poll the council and give a direction to staff not to proceed with any engineering or redevelopment of Commercial Street west of Wooddale Road from there to Grove. The staff may not be aware until you get further council direction on that.
So I make that motion?
I think so that they have proper direction.
Yeah.
Probably we should do that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make that motion. What you stated, is there a second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I had one other comment. On Front Street, is that the bypass you're talking about? And if it is, I'd encourage you, rather than using our money, to use the federal money for any reconstruction of that.
Okay, and that, right. And that's only, only proposed to be a resurfacing, but.
If it's the bypass, let's try to use the federal money.
Okay. Alderman Police.
Got a couple of things. Gary, correct me if I'm wrong. Another thing that'll determine on when streets are being done is if there's a lot of water main breaks in a certain area, when that move things up on certain streets?
It's the chicken or the egg scenario. You have to develop one comprehensive plan first.
Right, right.
And then we'll go back and we'll look at all of our utilities. Now, generally, you don't let water main breaks drive your roadway construction projects. You really try to let the roads drive the roads. And the water mains typically in most communities, the underground infrastructure will follow the lead of the roadway program.
Because we don't want to go in there twice. First do the mains, and then three years later go in and do the streets. We're just going to rip it up twice. It'll cost us more money in the long run, right?
I agree. If, if the water mains are within the limits of the roadways, I agree wholeheartedly. I'll use Stonem as an example. We're currently in the process of, of working on Stonem, at the far east limits of Stonem, a water main project, which is entirely within the Parkway. That's a water main project that will probably be done here in, in '08. And you'll see on the, on the list, Stonem Street itself is not for another five years. So in those cases where we can go in and do a water main project completely separate from the roads, in this case, a water main project that, that really is needed, we certainly will do that. So yes, they do, they do work independently, but also we need to link them together.
One of the, I mean, we're using the $1.3 million cost, but I thought we passed that special referendum so we can get that extra two, two and a half million dollars for capital projects. Isn't, isn't that what that two, two and a half million dollars is for? So if, if we get two and a half million dollars extra a year in this, because of that 1% tax, couldn't we combine two of the streets, like School and Elmhurst, and do them all in one year and get things moving along? Because I also noticed on 2010, we're going to do again resurfacing. So we're doing 2008 resurfacing, 2009 we're going to do a street, 2010 resurfacing, and then 2011 the second.
You're.
I'm not sure if the money, you know, am I right or wrong on that $2 million, two and a half million dollars?
And just, just to clarify, the 1.3 is for roadway, roadway construction. If we do, and I'll use School Street, I don't, I'm assuming we'll probably end up doing the water main with, with, with the roadway out there.
Okay.
It's going to be 1.3 for the roadway, plus X number of dollars for the water main. And that, that, if you look at the budget, like the capital budget that's before you tonight, you'll see 1.3 for the roadway program. And you go farther down, you'll see, I believe it was $700,000 this year for, for the water main. So.
For School Street.
With, with respect to the, the non-home rule sales tax, we are utilizing those funds for roads and utilities. We're just trying to keep the presentation simple tonight. We focus just on the roadway costs.
So the numbers we have here, the 1.3 is just for the road. That doesn't even include what, new water mains on School Street?
Right.
Correct. Although with the reconstructions built into those costs is a, is a certain amount for utility work. I guess I would just kind of put that out there, because usually storm sewers and everything else go with it. But things like an isolated water main replacement, no, that's not included in this at all.
Alderman Wesley.
Gary, I have a couple of questions. How much did this study cost us to do?
The vendor that we paid to do this was $15,000.
Okay. My question here is, there's now this conversations about moving streets up and all this, all this stuff. I have a problem with that, because I thought as a council as a whole, that we choose to go and hire firm, which we did, paid $15,000 for a street study, that, that was more in debt, which I, I think it was more in debt than this. And now we're talking about going off, possibly going off that study. Why would we, I thought that was the whole purpose, that we take the worst roads first. Unless I, we take the worst roads first, and those goes by priority. If there's more money available, I have no problem adding another road in down the line. But I thought the whole council, when we awarded that contract, because before it was a, or before we did the street study, it was that they were handpicking this one, handpicking this way. And we, as a council, joined in forces, and we choose by staff recommendation to go out and do a whole street study. Well, if we're going to start moving this street here, moving that street up, moving this street away, why did we waste $15,000 to do a street study that, that our basic, our decision was as a full council, that we take the worst street scenario? I mean, if, if there's money available, I have no problem moving streets up. But the problem is, we need to do, that was a whole purpose of a street study that we paid for as a council approved and passed last year. So I think we need to follow the, the direction that we gave staff at the beginning for the street, when we hired the street study, go ahead with the street study and, and take the worst street forward first. And yeah, if, if there's a problem up in Royal, then go up there and fix it like we always do. You go down 83, 83 needs to be redone. I mean, every road right now has got major potholes, no doubt about it. But I think we need to stick to our, our recommendation that we directed with that $15,000, that we stick to the street study, not keep changing around. Because every year we're going to come here, oh, no, this street's worse, this street's worse. It's going to be ongoing, it's going to be ongoing. Election time, this street needs to be done, because it's my word. That was the reason why we did this street study, is for no Alderman to sit up here and say, oh, well, election time, I'll do, oh, let's push this street. No, that ain't the purpose. I think we should stick to this and do it.
If I can just add a comment on that, and that, and that is exactly how this plan was put together. Certain, there's certain items where there's more flexibility. One of the things we ran into is we, if we had a, a street to be reconstructed, and that would take the entire budget for the year, and we had another one we also wanted to reconstruct, that would also take the whole budget. We tried to not do those in two consecutive years, because that would give us a three-year period where we only did one resurfacing. So we tried to put another resurfacing in between those, if that makes sense. So there may have been a little bit of deviation on that on the reconstructions. And again, as we said, the reconstructions, you can let them go without a cost penalty. But for the resurfacings, we really did strictly follow a worst-first approach.
Alderman Police.
I just want to make a comment. When we go to, let's say School Street is the first one, when we do the engineering, can we do the engineering for School and Elmhurst? Is, is that a problem? I mean, and see what the, because, let's face it, the more you do at once, the better price you're going to get.
Well, our plan is to do those in-house.
Right. I understand, but.
Oh, you, the more you construct at once, the better price. I see what you're saying.
Right. But if, you know, I don't want to, if we can do the, you know, again, it has to be council's direction, has to be a vote, but I think we should start, do the engineering, try and move these things along here.
And that might become ultimately a budget issue. If, if we're initially saying School Street's 1.3 and Elmhurst was 2.3, you know, we're at 3.6, and that, you know.
I understand, but, but we can do the preliminary work, because it's being done in-house. So if we do it this year and the street gets done the following year, it's no change to the city, right? It's not like something's going to change, right?
No, the engineering could be done, you know.
Ahead of time.
Correct.
Because it's a possibility, I mean, somebody may be looking for work and give us a great price and come in cheaper than what we're estimating, right?
For, from contracting, you mean?
Yes.
Certainly, if you do a $3.6 million project versus a $1.3 million project, you're going to get some economies of scale. You're not going to get, you know, 10%. I mean, so, so you're not, you're not going to get huge economies, you're going to get a couple percent. You know, then it boils down to logistics of in-house design. And we laid out that plan for you already as to what it typically takes to, to go through a reconstruction process. And, you know, we're going to start this summer, well, actually, we've got the wheels rolling already to go on School Street for surveying, you know, to, to, to really triple the scope of the engineering. You know, that might frankly be a little bit much for us, you know, to do in-house and have it all ready to go by this time one year from now. Especially given that we're still managing Special Service Area 14 next year and the 2008 street project. And we've already committed and said we're, we're right on board with doing School Street, but now you've, by doing that, you've tripled the, the scope of that project.
And because I'm also looking at, looking forward, 12 and 13, I mean, the streets are 964 and 607, that's a million, roughly a million six for the two projects. I'm just saying that we could possibly combine some of these things and take care of infrastructure and roads a little quicker than we're moving. Grant with, with the $2 million. I'm, I'm taking into consideration the $2 million extra we're supposed to be getting for capital projects.
But that's where, yeah, but remember, we're doing 1.3 of roads and 700,000 of utilities.
But we were doing that already before the $2 million, right?
No.
No.
No. We don't have $4 million total. We only have $2 million total. Yeah.
That's, oh, both.
So if you wanted to combine projects, you could, but then you're going to have to carry them over a couple of fiscal years. And so you might do two projects as combined in one year and get a cost savings, but you not be, might not be able to afford to do anything the following year. Right. You may have zero the following year in order to, to get your fund balance back up. And that's a, that's a finance department question, so.
And that'll be coming up.
I realize some other Alderman wanted, would like to be recognized. However, I am going to ask you, what type of direction are you looking for from us tonight?
I think approve the, approve the plan as we have it set up, or give us feedback on how you'd like the plan changed.
So.
Again, emphasis on the, on the '08 streets. Obviously, if there's a, if we can nail that list down, it puts us that much further ahead in getting that program together for this year. But we'd also like the whole plan approved or commented on.
Okay, then I'm going to make the motion and look for a second, then I'll call a question and recognize other Aldermen. So if, I'm going to make a motion to approve the 10-year plan concept as presented tonight, with the exception of Commercial Street between Grove and Wooddale Road. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question, Alderman Lewitin. Oh, I thought you did. Okay. Alderman Caddala.
I don't, I don't want to be misread here. I'm not questioning the validity, the validity of the work that led up to this map. But I do need a brief explanation from, probably from you, Dave. You talked about those four streets in Ward 2 around Salt Creek, that, you know, we need to look at a bigger, long-term picture. I think you also used the term visible distress. I've had multiple neighbors point the same visible distress to me. And now the fact that none of those streets are in the 10-year plan, I gotta go back to them with, with some level of a technical reason as to why that is. So if you could help me with that, I'd really appreciate it.
All I can, all I can say to you, and, you know, going off of what Alderman Wesley said earlier, that, that's where the numbers came out on the survey. And that's, they were ranked accordingly, and the scores that they got were relatively high versus the other streets. Not one of them, and I, bear with me one second as I can find it. I think Edgebrook did have a lower score and, and maybe would, would warrant resurfacing now, but we did talk about maybe looking at these as a group and not just pulling one out to do. We certainly can do that, but we thought there was some economy in giving them all the same treatment together. And I, that, that group of streets, I struggled with that the most. It really is, it's difficult to place that, because they, they came up with relatively high scores, but that just looks at the pavement, and we know there's drainage issues out there that are not part of this. And that's why I kind of gave that little speech in the beginning about, I, I would see these as candidates, we would, we would look at again sooner than, than 10 years from now. And they may show up on the list. But that's, that's probably the best answer I can give, is the pavement rating scores for those place them further out.
Okay. So it, it places them further out, but maybe essentially they kind of get categorized similar to, to the discussion you had about Knollwood. They, they might be, you know, beyond the midterm of their lifecycle, and it's kind of a unique part of town that might require unique, you know, response, and the, and the possibility or the desire to maybe do them all at once. They, they, they might have reached a point where, you know, just for, for economy's sake, you, you start to let them go, because they are at the end of their life. But that doesn't mean that you're going to really let them go completely. I mean, potholes continue to be patched, seams sealed or closed off to the, to the best of, you know, immediate ability. I just want, I want that to be clear to anybody watching, that, that if they are going to be kind of let go for reconstruction, it's not, it's not going to turn into a disastrous situation.
Correct. And another thing, there, I know there's a lot of edge distress out there. There's a lot of the edges are starting to collapse, and, and that's something we're going to have to look at as well, to make sure that we keep building that up. And things like that, probably do some patching out there, you know, sooner rather than later.
Alderman Wesley.
One other question. Dave, when you said revisit in, in the next five years, are, are we talking a full-blown study again? Or are we talking, does a, I mean?
I'm thinking the full-blown study. I'm thinking we would have them drive the whole streets again. The reason I say that is that the $15,000 to do every street in town is, is relatively inexpensive.
Okay, that's fine. I just want, well, you're going avoid those, you're going to re-study those streets that already were done, then you would.
Oh, if something was, was just done very recently, no, we would.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
Alderman Kneipp.
Yeah, as far as Edgebrook, that was one of the first streets done when they started this plan maybe 15-plus years ago. And that was the one that was done with the Mylar Underlay. And for as many times that street has gone underwater under all conditions, and that, I think it's done remarkably well over a lifespan. And I've often questioned whoever did that contract, and whoever did that construction, why we don't use that Mylar concept anymore and that. Because it apparently, you know, proved itself very efficient, very effective in the, like I said, that, that street and the ones close to the creek that go underwater several times a year and whatever, under all conditions, holds up extremely well.
And I wasn't familiar or around when they did that. Is that like, did they put down like a fabric?
Oh.
Okay. And we use similar, we, we're employing similar technologies like in the industrial park projects. So we, that is still used by engineers to, to do, you know, for roadway projects.
There's a motion, a second. Anything else on the question? There's a motion, a second, anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, one opposition, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number five, report and recommendation, contract award, vehicle purchases. And I make that motion as indicated in our packet. The automobile's listed in the packet and I'm looking for the net to exceed dollar amount of Is there a second?
Second.
And the question, Alderman calls?
Can I ask, Gary, why is this 2008 Ford 550 chassis with a service body and a crane? I thought we just bought a truck with a crane on it. Why are we getting two?
No, we didn't buy one with a crane.
Well, with a lift.
Well, we have an aerial lift truck and the aerial lift truck is utilized for streetlights, forestry. This is actually a crane like you would see, like a mechanic's crane. They use it for pulling pumps out of lift stations and stuff.
All right, okay. That's all I wanna know. Thank you.
Alderman, please.
I got a question for you, Gary. On these more expensive trucks, when I was going through the budget, I saw that, you know, we're like on a third year of a five-year lease on some of those other trucks. That's, wouldn't these trucks be kinda along the same lines, maybe lease and lease to own type deal? Or instead of spending the money all at once?
Mr. Holmes?
And that was an approach that council took for several years. The last couple of years, the only reason they've changed that approach is that you pay, you pay five payments, basically. You do a five-year lease. You gotta think of that fifth year as being nothing but interest. You pay about 20% premium to use that approach. If you can pay cash on the spot, if you will, you basically save 20% of the cost by doing it that way. These are, these particular vehicles before you tonight are in the current 07, 08 budget. Your question is very valid, if you wanted to consider that for the, you know, 08, 09 budget, we've been using MFT funds to fund the leases. But the reason why we got away from it is really the premium, you're putting another 20%.
Alderman Wesley?
I have one question. Gary, last city council meeting, we approved the purchase of a few vehicles already, right? Why would we not do it all together? Second, on a follow-up to that question, if you knew you needed these trucks earlier in the year, why did we not approach this now? Why is it every time now we go towards in the budget, we mass spending now? I mean, could you answer that question? If you knew you needed these trucks, why didn't we purchase these earlier in the year?
First of all, the two, we do have six vehicles total in the budget. We brought three of them to you last cycle. And really, it was just a matter of the vendor getting us information. We were still waiting for the vendor to get us information on these last two vehicles to bring them to you. With respect to why in the fiscal year we're doing it in February as opposed to in September, it was just a matter of priorities and work schedules is all it was. You know, we have to take possession of these vehicles by no later than April 30th to be part of the 07, 08 budget. And it was just a matter of priorities as to where we put the purchase of these vehicles and combined with all the other workloads that we're working.
Well, I understand it, but again, I really like to see, if we're going to buy vehicles, my concern is if you know you're going to buy the vehicles, buy them a little sooner. I mean, we are, we are at the talking budget talks now and now I'm making a purchase of two new vehicles right now. If you're going, you know you need a vehicle, you should have that all ready to go and go ahead and do it. I'm just saying in the last minute now, two months away, we passed, possibly passing a new budget and we buying two new vehicles. I mean, I.
But this is out of last year's budget.
I understand it, but it just seems like every time now, if it's in the budget, two months prior to the budget, we all go on a shopping spree and we gotta spend, we gotta spend that money. I don't think that needs to be done that way.
Except at the same time, I mean, it is only February. Mr. Holmes said he was waiting on information. We've had a lot of hard months throughout this fiscal year, so I don't feel it's unreasonable.
And Chairman, I have no problem approving it, I'm just asking that maybe we need to move these purchases up a little sooner than wait till the last minute. That's all I'm saying. I have no problem approving it, though.
Alderman, please.
Gary, the trucks that you're buying, you're basically replacing other trucks, right?
Correct.
So we got another eight months out of the old trucks before we replace the new truck? I mean, it works out the same way.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number six, report and recommendation on Woods Lift Station, contract change orders number five and number six. In consultation with our city attorney, he advised us to go ahead and make the recommendation at a committee level and then we will have the discussion with our legal counsel before we would decide on this at the council level. But his suggestion was to get this information to the next level and then have the conversation before we agree or disagree at the council level. So I am gonna make the motion to concur with RHMG's recommendation to approve change orders number five and number six in amounts of $2,922.98 and $9,420.92 respectively.
I'll second it.
And then, Mr. Holmes, was that motion sufficient for you or do I need to add anything in that?
No, that motion's fine, I think just action and our vote and then.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second, anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number seven, Woods Lift Station Pay Estimate number four, that's a report and recommendation. This is the final payment. So I make that motion to approve final payment to Mosel and Associates in the amount of $46,263.93. Is there a second? And then on the question and, but before I recognize anyone, Mr. Holmes, are you prepared to entertain any questions at this time? Or are we gonna have a similar discussion on this one as well?
If I could, and I don't want to pretend to play attorney, but perhaps if we could entertain maybe modifying the motion just in case and maybe just make the motion say staff is recommending that payment be made to Mosel and Associates. Maybe dropping that word final just in case. And I'm just trying to leave all doors open at this point.
Okay.
Second occasion.
Okay, and I agree to modify. And then are we gonna have discussion on this now or with the city attorney? So this is another case that we're gonna roll into the city attorney discussion. So there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on the train station reconstruction update. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Forrest.
All right, we'll wait for city manager to hand out some information here. The renderings that the city manager is handing out at this time are two conceptual drawings of the new train station. As I noted in the memo that came in your revised agenda, staff has solicited two additional architectural firms for some designs and cost of services for the construction of a new mature train station. I've been working pretty closely with Alderman Kedala. He came up with some conceptual designs that were included in the RFQs and the RFPs that were sent to these firms. And these results, I think, will give us a little better understanding and comparables and put KSNA's proposal in a little better perspective for us. Both firms submitted variations of the conceptual design. They feel confident that the dollar cost will be in line with the monies allocated for this project. And preliminary meetings with staff, Alderman Kedala and Alderman Police were held in order for them to present their designs and the qualifications of their firms. So first of all, we can look at the design that's more of the brown textures. That's from a company Fitzgerald and Associates. Fitzgerald and Associates are established and have very good credentials. They're an architectural firm located in downtown Chicago. Again, a very knowledgeable staff, they have a very extensive portfolio that they submitted for us to review. And you can see they're, again, going with the Prairie style. They're going with the increased volume tower at the west end of the station. And note that they do have the entrances in and out of the station at that two-story atrium area. A lot of extra glass around the top. The second design, which is in the bluer hues, that shows part of a parking lot, is the rendering that was done by Heitman and Associates. Heitman and Associates is an architectural firm that's located in Itasca. And Carl Heitman, the principal of that firm, has been involved in the designs of quite a few buildings in the Wooddale Industrial Park, most noticeably, or notably. He worked on the Mitsubishi building and he worked on the Videojet building, if any of you are familiar with that. His firm also did the drawings for the Pampered Chef Building that's out on Swift Road and Lake Street in Lombard. We do have a short DVD, actually, that was submitted by Heitman. If we can run that now?
Yeah, the first clip is actually going to be a 360 view, the one on the top. Yeah, that's a 360 view of their proposed station. The next clip will be heading eastbound on Irving Park Road, the view you'd have of the station. And the last and final clip would be the view that you'd have from inside the train going past the station.
So if you recall, when we sent out the RFQs and RFPs, you were copied a memo for myself and I did include in that conceptual drawing that had been put together and was submitted to the firms. Basically, one correction I would like to make on the memo and the bid analysis that you have, under the Heitman bid, there was a $3,000 fee for them to come out and create as-built drawings after the station was finished and that was mistakenly left out of this column. That's why the figures may not total up exactly. So there would be a number seven under the Heitman column for $3,000 for as-builts.
Are these clarification questions or? Okay, Alderman Wesley?
It's 3,000 adding after the new station's built, is that what you said?
Correct, well, the $3,000 is included in this $96,932.
Or it's just not listed?
Just if you add up this column, it's $3,000 short, so it's not increasing 3,000.
Alderman Kedala?
If I can clarify, and John, maybe you can tell me if I'm writer from Wacky. I thought that 3,000 was actually as-builts for the existing structure as we were gonna try to reuse the existing foundation. I thought that was a, to basically assemble the existing site plan and existing foundation and plan and existing utilities and anything else. No, I thought that was kinda like ahead of time. As, his architectials will be the as-builts if this thing is built right.
Yes, you're correct, Alderman, yes.
And that's just by default in the other architects' bids, it's just, they don't pull it out separate as Heitman does.
Correct.
Alderman Kinnip?
Yeah, these are the same footprint on both because the one, the perspective in the Heitman one makes it look smaller because apparently it's farther away or whatever, but using the same footprint?
Yeah, they are all the same footprint. They are gonna be utilizing the existing foundation and then also expanding that to the west.
Alderman Kedala?
Actually, Fitzgerald expanded to the east and the west. So Alderman Kinnip, you're right. When you look at the Fitzgerald one, there's kinda that part of the building that juts out before it gets to the covered overhang. He's extended to the east, whereas Heitman worked pretty religiously off of the preliminary drawing I did.
Alderman Wesley?
I'll just question the landscaping design. Does that have to be in there or can we just, I mean, what if we designed it ourselves? I mean?
We probably could remove that when Heitman, when Carl was in here with his consultants. The Heitman firm was actually looked at sort of the big picture of what Wooddale's trying to do in creating a town center. And their thought was to tie in the train station and use landscaping as an element to really bring the whole train station and the landscaping into the town center, roughly Irving Park and Wooddale Road, the Clock Tower Garden. And so that was, you know, their initial concept.
So that's landscaping by the train station, once it's built, whatever, we decide to go with their plan, is it?
And even, yeah, the train station and even the immediate area to the west of the train station, a little bit to the north of it.
Okay, there you go.
I mean, all three design firms are offering fairly similar services. The reality is these type of design firms are required part of this type of a construction project. They are architects, designers, consultants, they're not construction managers per se who would be on the site daily. They would assist us in working with subcontractors, getting the bids, working with Metro. Of course, they'll prepare the architectural plans. They will make site visits at key phases of construction. I think when you analyze the bids, the dollar figures from Heitman and actually KSNA are fairly similar. You add the $10,000, $10,800 that Heitman included, of course, that brings their total up. But if KSNA were to add a similar fee, again, those proposals are fairly similar.
Now, I know we all have some comments and questions and I do wanna understand that it's, are you looking for affirmative direction tonight of saying, okay, well, let's go with Heitman and then move forward?
Yes, that would be preferable.
Okay. Then, before I recognize Mr. Mayor, I'd really like to hear us all saying, I know that there's one missing unfortunately, but that we really do want a train, a train station, a new one. one missing unfortunately, but that we really do want a train, a train station, a new one, and even if some factors change, because I don't want to get down another road and then hear that, well, we really didn't want this, you know, and then it fails. So let's all be confident that we do want a new train station, that we like the design in front of us, that we want the coffee shop, the bathrooms, the lobby waiting area, the And so, you know, I just don't want to get down another road, spend $100,000, and then not have a new train station. Mr. Mayor.
Is the interior layout the same in all cases?
No.
Do we have, was that a previous meeting I had the other?
The layout is similar, but again, the Heitman design, though, there's not a floor plan included here, is a little closer to the conceptual design. The doors are more in the center of the building, and the bathrooms are located at the west end of the building. Coffee shop would be at the east end of the building.
I was going to comment, that was one of the improvements, I thought, in Fitzgerald's design, putting the coffee shop in the middle of the area, better flow. One of the other problems that occurred last time we bid this out was the $275,000 in electrical expenses and the switching expenses for Metro. Do the firms know about that when they say they can do this for $975?
I don't believe they included those, although they were given a lower dollar figure than what we've actually budgeted. We tried to leave a little play in there.
And I guess the last question I have is the committee. The chairman mentioned Heitman. Is the committee, I think there was a committee, do they have a recommendation as to which of the three you're proposing?
Alderman Kedala.
Yeah, actually, yes, Mr. Mayor. And if I could respond to all of your questions, I might be able to help clarify a little bit. Yeah, it was my recommendation, and I believe Alderman Police was feeling the same way that for what we're getting, Heitman, you know, is proving he understands the program and his dollar amount should be right in line. Once again, if you look at the bid analysis, the things that KSNA has not included, which is landscape and site design, as well as the reimbursable allowance, which is, you know, in the neighborhood of $5,000 for both the other architects, KSNA even goes over Heitman. So Heitman, I believe, has shown that he's qualified and also that he's the lowest bidder with relation to the floor plan. Heitman and budget, Heitman has really almost verbatim taken that drawing and that first, you know, set of floor plans that I, you know, preliminarily put together to try to get us on the same page, and he's used it. So while you are right that Fitzgerald's floor plan probably does work better, he's doing, they're doing things that are going to make the construction costs go up. Mr. Forrest, correct me if I'm wrong, but Fitzgerald was kind of working towards that $1.2 million budget that Alderman Wesley is trying to work into the '08-'09 budget. But Heitman is with his plan, with some, you know, some of the simplified details that I tried to include and some of the more simple materials, is feeling pretty confident that he's closer to the mill or even slightly under, which was the original program. I think you told him $975 in your RFP.
That's correct, Alderman, yes.
Okay, so...
Both those points.
Okay, so my other reason to want to go with Heitman is that he's showing us a less expensive building to build with, I believe, just as much visual impact, certainly from the street level, as Fitzgerald has. So that's where I am.
Alderman Coles.
I think Heitman should get it because he's the only one that decided to put landscaping in. I mean, here's a building that's got to have landscaping. I mean, you've got to make it look halfway decent with the little bushes here and there. And here, he's got 10 grand worth of landscaping alongside. I see no comparison between the other two compared to him. I think we should go with him. And it's about time we, we've been playing with this for the last, let's see, oh, probably, roughly two and a half years. It's time we decided we either want a station or we don't want one.
Alderman Kneipp.
Yeah, I prefer the Heitman one, too. I think that the use of less glass there is probably a better, you know, just looks like it would be more maintenance-free or less maintenance needed for that and more usable space. You could, you know, do whatever we need up there. You have wall spacing, it's not just a glass panel where you could do nothing with it. I like, you know, and it's here, you could see this almost as-built. I just think it's the better plan all the way around. That's my personal.
Do we know why he didn't or why Heitman didn't put a door on this side? If I'm looking at the picture underneath the overhang? Alderman Kedala.
That was back to the original floor plan that I did. There's only doors on the north and the south ends of the building as we have in our current building. That area, actually, is where the toilets are housed, the bathrooms are housed. So, well, there could be, once again, for the sake of economy and security, didn't see a need for, you know, for another door. Chances are pretty good that if you're going to wait outside, you're starting outside from your car anyway, you don't need to walk through the building to go back outside. So it was, it was me trying to do whatever I could to get the construction, this thing down, and apparently Heitman agreed.
So is, can you tell us again where the coffee shop is? Is it on the left of the door?
The coffee shop would be at the east end of the building.
Okay.
And again, it's, we call it a coffee shop, but again, it's basically plumbing-wise, about all we're going to have to supply there is a sink with hot and cold water. And again, as Alderman Kedala stated earlier, one of the benefits of putting the washrooms at the west end of the building is we're going to save those sewer and water costs because we'll be bringing in sewer and water from the west, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
So again, economy-wise, that makes more sense to have them at the west end of the building.
Okay.
And as far as coffee shop, again, in my research and talking to some of the vendors from some of the other train stations, it's going to be a pretty scaled-down counter. What these vendors have found is that typically when commuters get to the train station, they leave their house late, they arrive to the parking lot late, and they're basically running through the station. They want to throw money on the counter, get a cup of coffee, and be on the train. So this is not going to be a full-blown cappuccino machines, espresso machines. I'll make you an omelet while you're waiting. It's going to be a little more of a fast-track coffee shop.
Sounds good. Alderman Lewitin.
The current train station has a, I don't know, a marquee, something that's a pillar for paying parking fees for parking per day. That thing takes up quite a bit of space. It's out in the rain, people get wet right now when they pay on a rainy day. Where's this going to be now? What provision for cash pay is going to be made on this new train station?
Alderman Kedala.
It would be under the overhangs up against the building. While it's not shown in this preliminary, you know, drawing, it would very likely be under that western overhang up against the west solid wall of the main building, right where Alderman Winger was questioning why there might not be a door there, so. And being under the shadow like that, it hopefully won't detract from the building too much. Hopefully, it kind of blends in, but it will still be there, and this time around, it should be covered.
Alderman Police? Any comments? Alderman Wesley? Anything? Okay. Alderman Kedala?
One last thing, another one of the mayor's questions. Mr. Mayor, you said something like $200,000 and hidden electrical costs. I remember having a conversation with Gary, and Gary, correct me if I'm wrong or help me if I'm right, it wasn't really $200,000, it was probably closer to 60-ish that that ended up being. I don't know what the other $140,000, you know, and unidentified preliminary cost was, but that number was never that inflated. It was much smaller. And yes, John and I, Mr. Forrest and I, did both tell the architects that that is something that's in there, and they agreed, and it was in their budget.
Yeah, the big number was for everything, both internal to the building and external Metro. The small number that you speak of, and I recall it more around the $75,000, $80,000 range, was those exterior Metro things. So...
Alderman Police?
I recall the electrical is about $125,000, everything.
I make a motion to move forward with Heitman Architectural Firm for the not-to-exceed amount of $102,752 for the design and cost of services for the construction of a new metro train station. Is there a second? There is a second? Anything else on the question? All in favor? Or I'll do a roll call. Will the minute take a please? Call the roll.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Kneipp?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is items for future meetings. Item A, storm sewers detention ordinance revision. And is that something, Mr. Holmes, that the Stormwater Committee is going to present to us and then we'll tweak it? Or are we going to do some other type of thing?
Correct. We're still, we're still working through Stormwater Commission. Probably next month's meeting, we'll bring that up and hopefully bring it to you after that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other items for future discussion? Alderman Kneipp?
It's not an item, but I just want to thank Public Works for their quick response and fine work for the water break up on Oakwood and Potter over Saturday night. By Sunday morning, they had it all back in shape and all that, so they did an outstanding job under some pretty adverse conditions. My compliments to your crews.
Last week on the snow plowing, I'm not going to take any credit. I know the gentlemen that were, the gentlemen that were out there, and I heard the same thing, that they had some pretty rough conditions out there, so.
Alderman Coles?
I have one thing that Gary could look at maybe tomorrow or the day after. It's three water issues on Knollwood in the Royal Oaks. I just handed a note from the people that live over there.
Drainage, like drainage issues?
I have no idea. All they said was three water issues. It's the Knollwood on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Where are we going?
Where are we going?
Public health?
Public health.
Should be fast, no?
Public health is going to be pretty quick, then we can take a break and move into finance.
Let the roll of everyone is here that was here on the last committee. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for February 14, 2008. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, DuPage County Senior Citizens Council meal-on-wheels program has been canceled for tonight, so we can wait until they come back again. Okay.
Yeah, I believe that right now, Marian Krollick's sick. She couldn't make it today. I'll try to get her in the next available meeting in March.
Number four, report and recommendation on additional cab licenses. Our ordinance is quite old on cabs, and police chief has decided that we should let it ride and let them get 10 or 20 temporary cab license on temporary basis. And then we should have an update on our ordinance, all right?
Right. All we're looking for in this is, this is not a recommendation, we're just looking for the public health and safety to waive the hearing, to permit the current holders to go from 10 to 20 licenses per cab. This is upon recommendation from the attorney. Also, we'll clean up the rest of the ordinance later in the year with regards to changing that actual amount in there when we revisit the whole issue. Once again, this is quite an old ordinance, and we want to try to streamline this a little bit. So all we're...